I call to order the town council regular session. The time is 7:35 and the date is Monday, October 28th. If you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we ask Dale for the roll call, I would just like to have a moment of silence in the town chambers for in memory of Josie Fox, Maine Secretary at South Kingston High School and her passing. She was a woman who gave tirelessly to this community and will live in the hearts of many. I also want to extend our condolences to Vin Murray, Director of Planning, who lost his sister Kathleen Swolinski. She was an active member in Pawtucket with the parade, St. Patrick's Day Parade. She worked at the VA and she was a nurse and a graduate of West. So keeping those two in mind, if we could please have a moment of silence. Thank you. Could we please have the roll call, Dale?
Council President Whaley.
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Healy.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
Four members present, Councilman Donnelly is absent.
Thank you. I just want to make mention that Paul did talk to me today, Paul Donnelly, our council member, and he's not feeling well. So we have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of October 15th.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
I think those minutes, I'm going to ask to be tabled until the next meeting. There are some additions that I'm going to propose in reference to page 22 and 23 for the next meeting. So if we could table those minutes, I would appreciate it until the next meeting. So Mike, how should we handle this? We have a motion to approve and I'm going to make a motion to table them until the next.
I just did the work session though. I just said approval of the work session. You're talking about the regular session?
Let me just take a peek. Yep, okay, that sounds good, the work session. Okay, so motion to approve the work session. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and I'm going to make a motion to table the regular session October 15th until the next meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'm going to be asking that we add some notes from my notes to some of what is here. And then we can discuss it and vote on it at the next meeting. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, if we are, if you're adding notes to it, does that have to be included in the motion or not?
If you're tabling it, when you bring it up again at the next meeting, I assume that Ella will provide copies of what it is that she would like added. You can vote on it at the next meeting.
Right.
So we would be confronted with either these minutes or the new minutes? Are we voting one or the other?
These minutes as amended with her notes.
But I heard.
And we can discuss it at the next meeting and it will be in your packet to look at the additions that I would like added. And then you can vote it at the next meeting.
I don't mind putting it over, but I think these accurately reflect what, you know, much of what happened the other night in a summary manner, which is the usual way it's done.
I guess I feel the same way that Dale, in a synopsis, a summary manner, gave the results of a lot of discussion and conversation that evening. But where I'm confused, Ella, just help me out here, you said notes or is this from the tape that has all the conversation that evening?
I'm going to go back, Jim, and I'm going to be listening and re-watching that and I know that I've been, I know that Dale put together some exact, you know, discussion that happened and I may be asking for that to be included in the minutes. I know that we have done this in the past with the prior town council president Kathy Fogarty and it was asked for exact verbiage to be included in the minutes and that's what I'm going to go back and look at.
Why can't we approve the minutes with those two or three minutes that you need Dale to add to that? So we would have it done and would amend it to include Dale's two or three minutes that may include your notes.
Dale is saying though, Jim, she doesn't know what parts of the transcript she wants included at this point, which is why I think Ella's suggestion is just hold the vote off until the next meeting.
Well, I have no, I have no problem with holding.
I don't either. I think that's extremely fair. So let's move forward and let's bring this forth in, to the next meeting. Let's go through whatever we have here and base a decision based on the information that we receive.
So the motion, it's been seconded to table the work session from October 15th.
No, it's the regular.
I'm sorry, the regular session from October 15th for the next meeting. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero.
I did not vote.
Sorry, Jim. Are you abstending?
No, I will vote nay.
Okay, so it's three, one, zero. Consent agenda. Any council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries four zero zero. We have licenses. This is a resolution granting a victualing license to PJ's Pizza, 1202 Kingston Road, Peacedale, Rhode Island, subject to issuance of a certificate of occupancy applicant by Peter, and I hope I say this correctly, Sagurullahs.
That's correct, thank you.
Thank you. 55 Kenny Avenue, Narragansett, Rhode Island, and this is a new license, so welcome.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Donald Packer. I'm an attorney also in Peacedale representing Mr. Sagurullahs. He's reopening PJ's Pizza, which has, he operated there for many years. It's been through three owners and he's taken the place back and he's rehabbing it and he's going to reopen it. It's going to be the same menu, the same type of restaurant that he had before and we're asking that the council would reissue the appropriate victualing licenses for him to reopen his business.
Thank you. And could you just tell us a little bit about the hours of operation and maybe the menu or, you know?
Certainly, we'll be open seven days a week from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And the menu is what you would expect, I would say, your pizzas, your subs, your salads, some appetizers, and of course excellent quality and clean environment, which has been missing for a little while. But some of you must know that PJ's Pizza was there from 1998 to 2006 and we were doing a wonderful job. We'd like to bring it back.
What was the name of it recently? Was it PD's?
PD's.
Yeah, they were very close to the name you had, so.
There's no association with that.
Were you originally in another location in PJ's in Narragansett?
Oh yeah, I'm the owner of PJ's Pub on Boone Street, the Altermanese's.
Yes.
And I think some of you are familiar.
Well, that's a nice place, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we look forward to this.
Thank you.
In anticipation of a positive vote.
Yeah, very nice.
I appreciate that.
Okay, any questions here for Peter at the town council table?
Nothing's going to change in terms of hours of operation in your location?
I don't think we knew, I'm not sure we know what the hours of operation were for the prior businesses, but 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week.
Something of that nature, I'm not sure.
You're going to have the delivery?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Absolutely.
Well, I move approval of new license A.
I second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries four zero zero. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second license is a resolution granting victualing and holiday sales license to Beach Rock Cafe, 706 Mattoonik Beach Road, Wakeville, Rhode Island, subject to issuance of a retail sales tax permit by the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, application by Barbara Placido, 35 Woodstock Road, Post Office Box 157, Pomfret, Connecticut.
Hi.
Welcome. How are you?
Excellent, how are you?
Good. If you could just tell us a little bit about.
Okay, so.
New endeavor, Beach Rock Cafe.
Yep, it's an existing cafe. It's been there forever. We have just ended a lease with the former occupants and we're going to just run it ourselves, so.
So it's the, we're the owners of the property and we also have an existing business, the Mattoonik Laundry, which is in here for resolution.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm an artist, so I'm also looking for space as a gallery to show my work. So we're going to keep the footprint of the cafe, but we're also going to expand it as a gallery. So we're really excited for this opportunity to put our work out.
Wow.
Help me out though, Surf Shop, the.
Surf Shop is our tenant and Bob Fox.
So they're your tenant?
Yeah.
Are they out or are you, are they going to keep that space?
He keeps that space.
It's the restaurant.
So just the restaurant?
Just the restaurant.
Laundry?
Yes.
So the restaurant was a breakfast place mostly, right?
Yes, breakfast and lunch, yes.
It's that little plaza like.
Yes.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's very nice.
So we're going to keep the same footprint. It will be a light menu. Our hours will be part-time during the winter and then will be seven days a week during the summertime.
Great.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah.
So will it be just breakfast or breakfast and lunch?
Breakfast and lunch.
Yes.
Okay, shutting down.
And a coffee house, coffee house setting in the evenings.
Okay.
Sounds very good.
Jim?
My last question, does the Surf Shop and the Laundry at least have a lease good through next summer?
Yes.
Okay.
We own the laundromat, too.
Oh, okay, fine. No, I just can't tell you how important both those places are to our recreational business and are just a lot of our renters and kids down there.
I absolutely agree and I want to thank you for mentioning both the people who passed recently meant, that meant a lot to me at the beginning.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. So, yep, Bob is there and we own the laundromat.
Great.
Okay, other questions here at the town council table? Seeing none, can we have a motion?
I move approval of new license B.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries four zero one, uh, four zero zero. Best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brings us to, I believe, communications. First communication is a communication dated October 11th, 2013 from Grover Fuget, Executive Director Coastal Resources Management Council advising the Experimental Coastal Erosion Control Rules have been adopted, Section 980 of the CRMC Salt Pond Region Special Area Management Plan and requesting the appointment of a municipal official and a resident ex-officio member to the Technical Review Committee that was newly created under the rules is received, placed on file in the town council, further directs.
Well, we discussed this at the work session and we decided, I make a motion after the discussion that we appoint Vin Murray as the municipal official to this, what's the name of it anyway, Experimental Coastal, to the CRMC Technical Review Committee. And as far as the resident ex-officio member, we, I move that we advertise, have Dale advertise for a Mattoonik resident, I think a longtime Mattoonik resident who's very involved in all of the erosion and water issues that are going on in Mattoonik. I think that's how we, or is that getting too specific saying a Mattoonik resident?
I think what we'll do is I'll have Vin with Dale draft a scope of what the job will be and then invite the invitations from persons that would be knowledgeable of the coastline in Mattoonik.
Okay. So I amend my motion to say that.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. Communication C is a communication dated October 15th, 2013 from Joseph F. Matthews, Scout Master 244 Mattoonik, requesting letters of congratulation to Douglas Wright, Alexander DeLuca, Christopher Casey, and Nicholas Norris, I'm not sure I'm saying that right, for attaining, Norjes, for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and inviting council members to present the letters at their award ceremony on Sunday, December 8th, is received, placed on file and the town council further directs. And I'm asking which town council members would be able to attend?
I will permit myself.
I can be there. Oh, wait, no, no, I can't be there December 8th, I'm sorry. But.
Jim, can you be there?
No, no, I cannot.
All right, so far we have Meg. So Dale, and you have enough to do the proclamations.
I will contact them.
Thank you.
For what I need, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion?
A motion to send the letters congratulating all of these young men and to put together the proclamations to hand-deliver to them on December 8th.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries four zero zero. D, Communication D is a communication dated October 11th, 2013 from Peter Duhamel submitting his resignation from the Conservation Commission, effective immediately, is received, placed on file and the town council further directs.
I think we should send a letter of, I move that we send a letter of thank you to Peter Duhamel for his service on the Conservation Commission.
Second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication E is a communication dated October 23rd, 2013 from Councilman O'Neill, requesting a review and change of the current ordinances that are found in Section 7-10 and 7-11 concerning parking standards and regulation as they apply to the commercial districts in the town, is received, placed on file and the town council further directs. Jim?
I think we, at this evening's work session, have agreed to ask our members of the town council to vote to approve this going on the first meeting in November, the advertisement for, for the first meeting of November, to consider a change in the ordinances and regulations currently found in those two sections. Is there some other wording I should use, Michael?
Dale, I would just tell you, it'll be the order of notice will be the first meeting in November.
Okay, all right. So that's the motion.
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Jim, we also going to refer this to the planning board with the recommendation that we are very interested in increasing the ratio from three to one to four to one at the very least for parking in the commercial highway area?
Yeah, I would certainly like to add that to it, Michael.
Yeah, so that's what we'll actually advertise, the four to one.
Okay, all right, so that'll be in the, okay, that'll be in the written.
But we're also referring this to the planning board, were we not? Okay, with the recommendation from us that this is what we'd like to happen.
Okay, so we have the motion, we have the second. Person that seconded it does agree with those changes?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. Comments from interested citizen, this is the time that we open the microphone to the public. If you'd like to come and make a comment, ask a question, or let us hear your voice. Please come to the microphone and state your name. Thank you. Welcome to the town chambers.
I appreciate the time. I have some, basically an open letter to the members of the town council regarding a derelict property at 597 Middlebridge Road. That's my neighbor across the street. I live at the corner of Harcourt and Middlebridge.
Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Absolutely. Michael Cardi, C-A-R-D-I.
Thank you, Michael. So if you could give the letters that you have, Michael, to our town clerk?
Sure.
And then if you'd like to address what's in the letter, that would be great. That would be great.
Essentially, I've, well, my wife and I have lived at the property for the past 12 years and we've invested considerable time and money in upgrading and maintaining the property. And from day one when we moved there, we've had persistent problems with the owners of the property. There've been numerous police responses to the property for fighting, drug overdoses, et cetera. We found syringes on the property. There's a bus stop right there at the stop sign. It's a hazard to the children that live in the neighborhood. Now, with enough complaints to the town, finally, the town has boarded the property up. So now we've gone from a derelict property to an abandoned property. I had my grandchildren over this weekend, they wanted to know if they could go see the haunted house. It's a very bad situation and for the taxes that we pay, it's intolerable. I don't know what more the town can do, but at this point, after numerous complaints to the building officials, police, et cetera, I feel that we shouldn't have to live with this type of situation. I don't know what more the town can do to force the owner to improve the property. I would hope that they would lean it because they, Public Works boarded the place up and they've also filled in a whole big rut that was in front of the house from people parking there constantly, two truckloads of gravel at taxpayer expense. I've approached the owner with a couple of letters over the years, offering to purchase the property, but I've never had a response. So at this point, I would implore the town council to research the situation and hopefully do something that can remedy the situation and not leave people like myself having to live with that. So thank you for your time and I hope we can.
Thank you, Michael. I didn't know if Steve wanted to address any of the concerns and before I go to Carol.
Can I just ask one question first? Where exactly is this on Middlebridge Road? Is it right at the bottom of Torrey Hill as you?
No, it's about a block down from the park.
Oh.
Little west and halfway between the park and Torrey Road.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
On that side of the road?
You can't miss it. It's the house that's covered in plywood.
It's on the riverside?
No, it's on the riverside.
It's on the riverside?
On the riverside, yes.
It is?
Yes.
Oh.
There've been, there've been deaths there.
So for the record, my name is John Fredrickson. I own 7 Harcourt Avenue, the property just next to this property. And I completely agree with all the comments here. In addition, I have a tenant in that property currently and I've had to personally invest $3,000 just this year in additional fencing and security lighting to make my tenant feel comfortable with the property there. So it's now financially impacting me as well.
Have you had the opportunity of you to speak to the owner of the property regarding this issue?
I have not.
I've written letters, but she's never responded.
I'm Gail Fredrickson, I'm John's wife. I have called the building inspector and spoken to him regarding this and he has in turn spoken to Mrs. Houston, or he's told me he has, I guess they're neighbors, so I kind of took that route before going directly to her. I thought I'd come through the town.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Steve, did you want to comment?
I agree with the comments that have been made. The building has been secured. Once the complaint was in my office, I had the area reviewed and I directed Public Works to secure the building. This will not be done at taxpayers' expense, there'll be a lien placed on the property for the value of the time spent as well as the materials that were used. My major concern was that there had to be a complete lockup of that building to prevent any access because what had occurred is that the building, the door was wide open and that there were persons that were visiting that at different times of the day and night. Police Department had also been involved and we had serious concerns about some of the activities that had occurred there. So the building has been secured. It's a minimum housing standard issue that has to be addressed at this point, but the property owner is being held fully accountable for any of the costs incurred by the town to ensure the public health and safety. We'll continue to try to get some resolution there as far as getting it so that it's not boarded up and it's renovated, but at this point, the only steps we could take was to, under minimum housing standards, to direct the securing of the building, which we did.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Carol?
Steve, have you talked, have you ever spoken to this Gloria Houston? Is there any reason why she wouldn't be interested in selling this place if she can't rent it and she's not maintaining it?
It's not something I can discuss at this point.
Doesn't make sense, you know?
I believe she's holding that property for a month. She's in jail. She's been arrested.
Jim?
I mean, Steve, is Carol, I mean, brought up here, this makes no sense whatsoever. She's current on property taxes, I assume? I've not gone to the clerk's office to see if there's any problem with any equity line or mortgage.
No, at this point, I mean, there have been problems with that property over the last several years. We have been in our minimum housing standards as far as trash and debris that was directed to be removed. So there, there have been issues. Whether this person's going to attempt to sell the property or what actions she's going to take with it, I can't tell you. Unfortunately, there are no provisions in any of the municipal codes for South Kingston for the area to have the grass cut. The only thing we can ensure is that if there's garbage on site, that it's removed so that it's not a rodent issue. And the inspections will continue to be made.
Well, I'm feeling a little worried about that because if the current owner does the minimum to be able to live in that home again, the grass can grow, she can take the plywood off, put some windows in there, but the inside, what minimum that she can do that won't affect the neighbor's property values here, I don't see that happening. I don't even see how they can, how that could happen.
I can't answer you at this point, Jim, as far as what other steps the town can take as far as the minimum standards. The house has been secured.
Yeah, I know.
Trash has been removed, but if we have a property owner that is going to not maintain the property, that house can't, there's renovations that would be necessary before that would be habitable.
I don't know if the folks who are here tonight saw all the photos that Steve had taken by our police department, but you're certainly right, maybe even understating just how awful that was inside, but.
I certainly plan on continuing to try to remedy the issue. We've got the case, we've dealt with the solicitor on it, but at this point, minimum standard issues take a long time to resolve.
So at this point, there is.
If we don't have a, you know, a property owner that's willing to take action or that has the financial resources to be able to take the appropriate actions.
So at this point, I just want to clarify, there has been no lien placed on the property, is that correct?
No, the lien will be placed on the property once I get all the bills in from Public Works and the equipment that was used. So far, there's about $500 that have been charged. We secured, we initially secured the doors and one of the broken windows. The property owner then was directed to secure the remainder of the building. She had a private contractor secure the rest of the windows and the back door. So she's incurred costs associated with some of the securing, but she'll also have to remedy the costs associated with the town's activities on the property.
Carol?
Steve or Mike, when you issue the minimum housing violation, they have a certain amount of time to cure it?
That's correct.
How long is that?
A lot depends, Carol, on whether it's an immediate threat to public health and safety, you know, and if it's uninhabited, courts are going to give it a long time. I want to be truthful here, I've dealt with these issues in other communities, it'd be up to a year. Now, we'll stay on top of it and we'll press it and we'll press it and we'll press it and especially since at this meeting, we've got neighbors here, my office will be on it.
And are there fines associated that keep adding up so long as it stays in this condition or is that not until you get to court?
We can find, yes, under our general ordinance, we can fine up to $500 a day. I've never seen a judge actually impose $500 daily fines, obviously. What judges normally do is issue orders to remedy what the violations are, and then if those violations are not remedied, as so ordered, we go in for contempt. At that point, that's when you see judges start issuing fines.
Thank you. Any further questions from the town council?
One of my biggest concerns is that this is still a place that these drug users and dealers will come to at night, even if they can't get in. And a few of our other neighbors, the Humeses, they live on the other side of our house, and their children go to that bus stop, and they've seen and found syringes at the bus stop. So if the house still sits in this deplorable condition for another year, it's a big health concern for our neighbors. They just weren't able to make it tonight.
I want to make it clear, the police department is continuing to surveil that property. It has over the past six months, and it will continue to do so if there's any type of activities that do not belong there, they will be, they will be stopped. So the police are well aware of it. That is a spot that is reviewed during each shift.
Michael?
I just want to make it clear that I appreciate what the police and the building department and minimum housing has done, and I understand their limitations, and I don't hold it against them, you know, I just understand the problems here. I'm just hoping that something going forward can be done to remedy not just this situation, but anyone else that might come across this problem.
I think the other thing that's helpful, too, is as long as we have people that are willing to come into court with us, it may be advantageous as far as expediting the process.
Well, I'm available if there's a hearing of any type. I would be happy to be there. And if you manage to get ahold of Mrs. Houston, tell her I'm a cash buyer. I can close in a week.
Michael, can I ask you, have there been people there since the place has been boarded up? Have you noticed a change?
I've seen cars come and go, but I guess they see that it's boarded up, and they just kind of go on their way. And I know the police have followed up. I've seen the police there numerous times since they boarded it up and done a walkabout and make sure it's still secure, and I do appreciate that. But there is still broken furniture on the lawn. The grass is, you know, very tall, as you can see by the pictures. The fence is falling down, and I don't relish the idea of living with that for another year or so.
No. Is there electricity in the place?
Apparently, the gas and power have been shut off. I don't know about the water. From what the police say, there's a lot of bad stuff in the house, and if they freeze a pipe and it starts to flood out into the yard, I would venture to say that it's a hazardous waste situation that...
Water's been shut off as well?
It has been. Okay, that's good to know. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
I've got a letter from my tenant and a picture of a large rat that we had to get removed from my property, so there's, you know, we need to get the house cleaned. And if we have to go to court, I've got every letter from my tenant, every receipt I've done on my house to make her feel safer, the whole bit, so I'd be happy to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions here at the town council table? All right, I'm going to open the mic back up to anybody else who would like to speak. Are there any comments here at the town council table? I have a few. All right, I just want to let the town council know that I received a letter that I gave to Steve from N.J. Stedman in reference to trying to get the name on the Surcatucket War Memorial, so put that in the hands of Steve and Dale. I think there needs to be a committee formed, is what Steve said today, so just wanted to inform the town council of that. I also wanted to comment and kudos to the Kingston Fire District for their awards ceremony. It was well attended and just a beautiful presentation to some people that really stepped up into the community here, especially with that rescue that took place with that young man and his father on the river. So that was on October 20th, and it was a wonderful celebration in reference to the Kingston Fire District Awards Ceremony. And I just want to remind the community and the town council as well that November 9th, we have a human being at the Elks welcoming Joe Tiger Patrick back into South Kingston from his cross-country walk, carrying that flag with those that have fallen in Afghanistan and Iraq. So that's going to be a great celebration to welcome Joe Tiger Patrick back. And then I also want to ask Steve or Mike and the town council if we can have the Transportation Traffic Review Commission look at parades and parade routes as far as shutting down some of the major roads in reference to some complaints that I've gotten from businesses. So I'm wondering if we can kind of put that into the Transportation Traffic Review Commission and see if there can, can't be some kind of a recommendation to come forward.
Your concern is that you want to know whether they would be in support of not allowing the roads to be closed for those races? Is that the question, Al?
Right. I know that there's a race coming up, but it hasn't come in front of the town council yet, and I know that you have a new form that you're developing that will go through Transportation Traffic Review Commission. So just to look at the format, if many more races come forward and they want to shut down, you know, I'll use Main Street as an example, you know, and how it's going to affect the businesses. So if the Transportation Traffic Review Commission can kind of look at that and make a recommendation along with all of the work that you're doing with redoing the form, I think that that would be helpful to the town council.
Andy's got it written down already.
And we, we're not talking about the parades, though?
No, no, the parades, obviously. I think we're all in support. Keep the parade, yeah.
Yeah, we want to keep the parade.
Yeah. So anyways, I just think it'll be valuable information to bring forward to the town council and let that Transportation Traffic Review Commission look at it. And then we do have three letters here at the table that I just want to make note of. When we did go through that informational hearing, there was letters that were mentioned to the town council that were going to be handed to Dale, and those were never given, so I just wanted to make sure that the town council did have that. There are three letters, one from a Kate, well, you know, three letters, one from a Kate Donegan, a Josh Sherman, I guess, looking at some kind of amendment to a noise ordinance. There's also a Marjorie Weiss and Noel Smith, attempt to amend the noise ordinance, and Dorold Beersley and Trudy Touch, T-E-U-T-C-H, again, for comprehensive noise control. And these were the letters that were referenced at the informational hearing, so just wanted to make sure that those are in the hands of the town council. Other than that, I think that's all I have. Anybody else have anything to add? Seeing none, town managers report.
One item that was on the October 24th miscellaneous packet, item A, was that the Washington County Regional Planning Council was going to be hosting on December 6th a breakfast meeting. They're not inviting their fellow council members. They're looking to get in advance of that meeting legislative priorities of the different towns. So what's been requested is that for the council's next meeting in, in November, that the council draft or provide a recommendation on different issues that this council in South Kingston would like to be considered in terms of the discussions that'll be held with those local legislators. So if there's anything specific that any council member wants to be placed on that legislative draft list, please get the information to me in advance of that, when the packet goes out on Wednesday afternoon for the Thursday, in advance of the next meeting in November, because I think it's very important for the local legislators collectively to hear from the various towns on the concerns that they have, both on the things that happened in the last legislative session and the things that, that may come back that didn't pass at the last session. So if there's any specific items that council members have, please forward that to me. I'll try to draft a priority listing on your behalf and have it so that it could be considered by you at the next meeting in November, at the November 12th meeting.
Thank you, Steve. I'm glad you brought that up. There are five to six legislators that will be attending that breakfast with Washington County Regional Planning Council, and they're very energetic, looking for recommendations from the eight cities and towns here that represent Washington County Regional Planning Council. Just also want to give the town council an update on streetlights. It is actively rolling forward and picking up a lot of traction from many cities throughout the whole state. We have a lot of interest from One Socket, Walworth, Cranston. We've kind of partnered with Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, who has given us some funding to move forward with, you know, work with the PUC, and it looks like there'll be significant amount of savings if this can be moved forward, and it seems as though it's being successfully rolled out. So a lot of good things happening at Washington County Regional Planning Council. We also received a Rhode Island Foundation grant for $45,000, and if we can get 50,000 lights, there should be a significant savings, and as each town comes forward without, throughout the state, even though this is generated with Washington County Regional Planning Council, the whole state will benefit. And we're registering with the state as doing business as, according to our last meeting this Wednesday. I do serve as president of that group, and we are registering as a DBA with the PRISM, which is Partnership for Rhode Island Street Lights Management. So good things are happening, and we should, hopefully, we'll see some dollars saved down the road for every town. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, Steve?
No. I agree that the street lighting, as the main concern that we've had with the street lighting was the tariff that was going to be presented by National Grid and what the implications would be to the cities and towns. And with the collaborative effort with the league and the Washington County, I think we're attempting to address those issues that, and make sure that the municipal interests are well served before the PUC makes the final decision on the final tariff that will be in place, because the tariff's going to deal with not only what the cost of the lights would be, but also how they would be providing energy to those lights if they were owned by the municipalities. Each of these things will have profound impact on what potential cost savings could be there if they're not handled properly in the, in the municipal interest. One other item I did want to mention tonight is that council is in receipt of the 2012-13 Annual Report of Municipal Services. This is a important document for the general public. It's a document that provides highlights of the various things that each of the municipal departments are involved with over the course of the year, as well as what the activities are that are planned for the 13-14 year. This year, there's a great deal of explanation on the financial management systems that are being installed, as well as the need for more people to be involved with the community notification system so that in times of emergency, we can contact the, the general public. There's a good deal of narrative provided on the coastal erosion issues that we've been dealing with and will continue to deal with, our beach relocation projects, the intermodal facility that will be constructed, the state highway projects that we are looking at over the next 18 to 24-month horizon, particularly those dealing with the high street improvements. And we're also looking at some of the changes that, that we've seen over the year, particularly like in the land evidence recordings that are occurring. We're seeing an increase in that, that activity, and we're seeing the town bouncing back from some of the recessionary issues that we were dealing with. So it's, it's a well-documented issue. It's available on the town's website for download. There are physical copies that are available at the libraries, as well as here at Town Hall for someone who needs a full copy. And certainly, I think it'll give somebody a far better perspective on the volume of services that are provided and how it touches many different aspects of, of our citizens' lives. So with that, I'd yield the floor to the solicitor unless there's any specific questions council has to the two reports issued since the, the last meeting.
Any questions? Seeing none, town solicitors report. All set for Michael? We have appointments? We have one.
I move to reappoint Kenneth Bowman for the Housing Authority. His term expired October 2013, and he will be reappointed for a five-year term, which will bring him to October 2018.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 400. New Business. We have New Business B. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to SmithCo Oil Company, 491 Main Street, Wakeville, Rhode Island. Number two, fuel oil and for maintenance and service for the town and school department for a one-year period commencing November 1st, 2013 through October 31st, 2014, according to the terms and conditions of the bid specifications at the following price schedules, and that's listed. And further authorizing the town manager to negotiate a price cap and the ability to authorize trial use of blended biodiesel fuel at other town locations at tank car price transportation, plus transportation, if determined to be in the best interest of the town and is further described in a memorandum from the Financial Controller to the town manager dated October 22nd, 2013, and entitled, "Number Two Fuel Oil and Maintenance Service Bid Recommendation." Steve?
SmithCo is the current provider of service for the town. The transportation cost of 11 cents per gallon is the same price that was in the existing contract. We will review the cap insurance potential and make a decision on that before Friday as to whether or not we will put it into effect for the, for the year. The oil prices are down from what they had been in the prior year, but the only thing that you're really awarding here is the transportation cost. SmithCo was the only bidder this year. There was a second bid that was submitted late, late by Santoral. Just for information purposes, we did review it, and their price per gallon for transport would have been 16 cents, so it certainly is indicative of the SmithCo price being a viable cost factor for the town for the upcoming year. Recommend the council approve as presented in Frank's memorandum.
Thank you, Steve. Can I have a motion, please?
I move approval of New Business Item B.
I have a question.
Can I have a second, please? Could I have a second before we have any discussion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Carol, Meg?
I'm sorry. I just, I do have a question, and you may have addressed it, Steve. I was looking at this and at the actual agenda, and then I did go to the prior year comparison that you had just recently suggested or talked about, but I was wondering about the bid prior year where the cap insurance had a zero face value, and then the negotiated bid was up from that? I just wanted some clarification on that.
We took the, we, we used the cap last year, and the value of the cap was less than what the cost difference was, so we lost. We paid more than we would have if we didn't take the cap. That's what happened last year. What I'm looking at this year with the cap, unless the cap price is reduced from what he had in the initial bidding documents, we wouldn't be taking it because there would have been a 15 cent...
Okay.
...value on it. If he were to reduce the price down, it may be something I would consider, but at this point, I think it would probably be in our best interest to, to go with the actual cost based on the tank car.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 400. New Business, Item C, is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Santa Buckley Energy Incorporated, PO Box 1141, Bridgeport, Connecticut, for natural gas, based on Rhode Island's Master Price Agreement Number 233 for the period November 1st, 2013 through October 31st, 2014, and is further described in a memorandum from the Financial Controller to the Town Manager dated October 22nd, 2013, and entitled, "Natural Gas Contract."
The, the town agreed back in May to put the purchases that we would have for natural gas under the master price agreement that the state were to have with their reverse auction that was conducted in, in, I believe, September. The, the prices for that one-year term are spelled out with the transportation cost. The transportation cost is down about 33 cents from where it, I'm sorry, about 3 point... The transportation cost is down about 33 cents from where it, I'm sorry, about three point, it's down about 33 cents from where it had been. However, the commodity cost itself in the natural gas is considerably higher than it was last year at this time. We're asking council affirmation of the fact that we'll purchase between November of 2013 and October of 2014 through the state contract. What I want to look at next year is moving from the MPA and possibly going to an aggregate, aggregation program that's run through the school department, who is also purchase, a purchaser of a great deal of natural gas. There may be a better price available to us. In 2009, this was a better deal than it is today, but we've already made a commitment to stay for one more year through the MPA. So, recommend the council approve as presented in the memorandum of October 22nd from, from Frank.
Could I have a motion, please?
I move approval of New Business Item C.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at...